Oh no, let's see. Oops, too big. Oh man. Good morning fam, how's it going? How do I get this to scroll? Not flip to the se- to the next page. Uh, let's see. Holy moly, how do I do this? Little wisdom me, how you doing? Can't believe you're awake. Finally I'm streaming. I know it's been a whole week. See, how do I change this? Doing fine things. Is it cold where you are? It's freezing and snowing here? Yeah, well it's not freezing and snowing here but it's cold. It's cold for me. Have the, the, I have a blanket over me. Let's see. What is this? Cold and s- s- freezing and snowy, that's crazy. See. Are you east coast fam? Oh cool, finally. So strange. Where the heck is this menu? Oh my gosh, I've been spending like half the stream figuring out how to make it scroll. Right click on the toolbar and you'll see the following menu. Twenty six degrees Fahrenheit, I'm in Buffalo. It sucks. That's freezing. It's not even close to that here. And I'm cold. It's fifty seven right now. Used to go there when you were living in Toronto. Don't you hate NorCal? Are you a NorCal hater? See. This is. Yeah, it's nice. Toronto's nice too, but the, but I don't go up there af- as often as I should. Still not used to using freedom units, which is twenty six degrees. What's twenty six degrees freedom units? That's funny. I think is this thing? Oh my gosh, I'm gonna spend like the whole stream trying to figure this out. Able scrolling, thank god. Finally figured it out. It took me a little longer than I, than I wanted. So now I can decrease the size of the page. Should be fine now. Nice, awesome. Had a great wrap in downtown across the street of Starbucks, so good, I still remember. There's a Jim Steak, Steakout. Jim Steakout, what is that? Is that like a breakfast joint? Scrolling process is over, I know. It took way longer than I, than I'd like to admit. Oh man, it's freezing. Freaking fifty seven degrees. Holy moly. Okay. Where am I? I'm still happy that I figured, I mean, it's not a big deal, but I'm still glad that I resolved this last time. I think it's better to be separating these as uh corollary. They make late night delicious unhealthy food? Dang, that sounds like my kind of place. My handwriting. Oh no. Wait. I'm forgetting how to spell result. Or is that three point six? Any plans for today fam? Little wisdom me, what are you doing besides playing Unite? Hmm, sorry I was eating. What you eating? What are you having for breakfast? Actually, I could rephrase this something, it's a different, I'm gonna rephrase this. Am I in LA? Yeah, I live in LA. LA area. Let's see. The set of. Turyaki Chinkin from Panda Express. Oh dang. The set of Lebesgue. Not sure, I'll probably put some coffee on soon, maybe I'll do some studying. Not going out in the snow though. Oh, that sounds good. That sounds so relaxing. The se- the set of Lebesgue measurable functions. Here's something that. I know how you're studying linear algebra right now, or at least reading through the Friedberg book. We could show today that the set of Lebesgue measurable functions are a vector space. That has to do with this. This is a linearity property of, of Lebesgue measurable functions. So. Another way to write this is that it's just a vector space. We got our day of Christmas for the winter season, so we'll be back to ice and win. Ice and win? That sounds terrible. Okay, how do we show it's a vector space? Do I really wanna show it's a vector space? Hmm. I think I'm, okay, now I'm starting to wonder if I wanna show this, because I'm not trying to show ten, ten properties. If people usually mean they're from LA county when they say they're from LA, that's what I think. Linearities, is there anything it can't do? Good old linearity. Rather than meaning they're from the city of LA? I think so. It isn't, that's what I say. It's mainly because when you say you're from LA, people can kind of like. Um. People kind of know what general area you're in. Right? Rather than. I guess people can say LA county. It's the same thing, I guess. But I think typically people are going to like say where they're from. If they are choosing to say where they're from. They try to pick like a major city. Vector space. Oh my gosh, I don't know if I wanna prove all this. Hmm, let's see. Let's see how many properties, I mean, let's see what the properties look like. There are ten, right? Not sure if I wanna commit to ten properties. Where is it at? Where's that book? Where the heck is the linear algebra book? Who can use this? Okay. It's closed under addition, scaling multiplication, commutativity, associativity, existence of a zero vector. Yeah, this is overkill. I'm not sure if I'm gonna do this. It, you can do this, but I'm not, I don't think I wanna do it, to be honest. Actually, I'll let you guys decide, I guess. That's a good little collaborative exercise. I mean, if you guys wanna decide. Do you, should I prove all, all ten of these axioms for this? Uh, for the Lebesgue measurable functions? I got a bit confused by property seven, because I hadn't stated that. A one existed, but I guess that's because the vector space is over a field F, so one is inherited from there, I see. Let's see, I'm gonna prove. It's not a huge deal to do this, but uh. It's just kind of annoying. Okay, why don't we do this? A five, the existence of zero. Typically. Um. You're wondering, you're wondering why. You need to, oh, so you're saying that, let's see, because they hadn't stated. Typically, typically the one in the unitary property is, is given by the field. I don't think you have to show it exists, but for the vector space, you have to show that some vector um can, can be. Uh. Some element in the set can, can function as, as a, a zero. As a um additive identity. No more Friedberg, yeah. Friedberg's a good book. Let's see. So the only issue I have with this, I mean, proving this is not a big deal, it's, it's just tedious. The only issue I have with this is be- is due to the fact that um I may not need. All of the um. The properties of a vector space. Because of vector addition, but only scaling multiplication, I think that makes sense now. Let's see. Let's actually scroll, do we actually need this? We're gonna do, I mean, linearity is gonna be kind of, is important for integrals at some point. So we do need that. Do we need everything from linearity? Let's see. Do we need everything? We might, uh, might just need everything, just in case. Let's just do it. Let's just do it. Okay. The first thing we're gonna prove is that it's closed under addition. Um, which is basically the first. The first part. Of this proof. And for this proof, I, so we're getting into the territory of the stuff that I kind of already done. I spent time on it, I'm just gonna copy and paste the results, 'cause. It's not too beneficial for me to go over it again. See. Where is it at? Measurable spaces and functions. So. So the zero property in five isn't necessarily zero in F, but the one in prop seven is a zero from F. Yes. Yes, exactly. So you, in five, in vector spaces, one of the big, one of the big um. Tasks, one of the, 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 the big tasks of vector spaces is to show existence of the zero and the inverse. So you got, it's basically showing, you basically had to either identify what that would be in the set. And so that's not like, I guess quote unquote free. So it's not the same. Um. In, in this case, the axiom seven, the unitary property, you just need to kind of identify, like, what field you're working under. And show that when you. When you multiply it by. The identity of the field and you multiply it by the vector, you get the vector back. So depending on what vector space you're working in, that, that is usually trivial. Yeah, so for this one, I will show this one in a second. Show you how to do this one in a second. Let's see. Yeah, I already did the sum. And so the big, the big thing here is that we just need to show that this set, these sets are equal. And I did that here, let's see. I'm gonna copy this. So this whole giant paragraph is basically the justification for. It's the justification for this line right here. Yeah, exactly. So I copy this. Paste it here. Oh no, it's not. Dang it. It's not gonna fit. If I go one line above it will. Okay, if I go one line abo- above, it should fit. This is red. Okay, right now we're. Okay, I'm gonna show which axiom we're proving. Okay, this is A one. Just closure. Okay, so we're trying to show that if we add two measurable functions, Lebesgue measurable functions, we get another Lebesgue measurable function. Okay, so what did I write here? I basically. You suppose that we're on this side of the set, which tells us that. Uh A is less than the sum of these two. And so. Moving the, just doing algebra under inequality, we get A minus G is less than F. And then right here, we can leverage the density of R to show that there exists an R. Or case R, that's between these two, right? So this is just like a real analysis one fact. So there is a real number between two real numbers. Um. And so this basically means that this this interval is not empty because there's an R in between. So. Um. See, X is an R, it's X is an F inverse from R to infinity. Okay, I need to remember why that's the case. So. If R is in between. So R is, so R is here. R is less than infinity. Okay, this is why this is the case. So X is in. X is in this inverse because of this inequality. Okay, since um R is greater than A minus G of X. Then A minus R is less than. Uh G of X, and so we get X in this inverse uh relationship. Um. And so X is in the intersection. Okay, that's good. And so that's how we get the containment in one direction. And then we suppose that it's in the intersection. For some rational R. So R is less than F of X and R, A minus R is less than G of X. This implies that. A is less than F of X plus G of X. And so X is in this. So the other direction is much easier. Um and then we get the containment in the other direction, and so we show that it's both sets are equal. So to be a little bit more proper. And. F. From E. To R. G. E to R. Are measurable. Okay. Um, okay, I need a copy of the rest. Okay, so. Okay, this is just a consequence of of unions. Right, let's see. Right, right, so. Okay, sets. F and G. Are measurable. And measurable functions. Closed. Under unions. F plus G. This is measurable. Okay. Okay, we got the closure of addition done. Only nine more axioms to go. Only nine, I know, shit. Okay, um. Uh. Fuck. Closed under scalar multiplication. Okay, axiom two is next. Shit. How's it going, Rezzy? How's the weather? Uh. How's the weather here? Does it get colder around that time? I forget how the equator is. I'm just wondering cuz I'm cold, bro. I can't ask you a weather question? Let's see. Hmm, okay, first thing I'm gonna do is show. Okay, you made my bed. Okay. Okay, first. Show. It's nice, it gets less hot for sure, and the countryside, it goes down to forties, maybe thirties, but that's like mountainside. Over here, it stays around eight, oh, seventies, eighties. I mean, yeah, I guess it's nice. See. Yeah, typical nineties, nineties is such, it's so sucky, man. Shit sucks so much. First we show that this is. Fifties is dumb. I could not spend Christmas in cold states. I'm actually gonna do that this winter. So we'll see how that, how that, how that works. It's giving me my first time being in like. Twenty degree weather. Right now for me, it's fifty-nine and it's already cold for me. Conf- confirm Reza's a lizard man. Say some of his Latin blood. It's fifty-nine in my apartment. Jeez. I need to freaking wear a um. A freaking snow coat. Justin, you're in Texas, right? So it should be, it should be cold over there too, isn't it? Just do pushups every ten minutes, like pair grills. Drink is pee. Honestly, I I kind of vaguely remember that. Yeah. Yeah. You kind of uh have to be careful what you do on on uh. National TV. At what cost? Note that. Is equal to E. Yes. Switching ready? Now you gotta show us your gains. How the Exodia decks. Bro, did, were you watching, were you watching that episode? It was a throwback to um. When Kaiba and his brother had like. Beef with uh his dad and and the dad's actual son. I don't know if you were there when when the episode came when uh Kaiba was was dueling his dad. And he, he had like the Exodia pieces, or at least most of them in his hand. And then he had, uh Kaiba had flashbacks of uh. Of the duel with Yu-Gi-Oh. Bro, everyone, everyone, like during that flashback, it obviously showed when he um, when Exodia was like destroying. Uh his blue eyes. But everyone in chat was spamming that that emote, which is available in that channel, where he's like, like getting blasted by Exodia. That shit was hilarious. I wanted to clip it so bad, but I was too late. Okay, this is equal to the empty and this is equal to E. I think they're still, they're actually on the um. They are in the last few episodes of the. The first Yu-Gi-Oh series. With uh Bakura as the main antagonist. It's a measurable function. So if it's not clear, if it's not clear why this is this. It's because F of X is identically zero, and if F of X is identically zero, if you take. Um. Let me see. If you take all the. outputs of F of X that are greater than zero, there's, since F of X is great, is equal to zero, there is no X that. Uh reaches anything greater than zero, so it's empty. And if you take all the outputs of F of X that are less than or equal to zero, since X, since this is identically zero, it's always gonna contain. Um some element of X. So the equality here is satisfied, it's not really the less than. And so we get all of E. Just woke up. Joseph, how are you doing? Congratulations. And so all of, all of E. Since F of X is identically zero, all of E maps to zero, so if F of X is less than or equal to zero. Like if we're looking at the X values, since that F of X is less than or equal to zero, that's all of E. This is a measurable function. Okay. Now we can actually do the. Cases. Let's. Let A, B, and R. Let A be an R. Okay, let A be the R. Wait. Let A be an R. Let A be greater than zero. About this, let A be greater than or equal to zero. Okay, what am I trying to do here? Um. We're trying to show that this. AF of X is greater than C. I have to find this again. I think it's created in C. Okay, this is the same thing as. Oh no, I can't do equal to zero. Have an issue here. I got a divide by zero. Issue. So I have to do strictly greater than strictly greater than uh zero in this case. So we get C over A. Okay. So this is measurable because this is any real number. Since C is any real number, then C over A is any real number. So. And we know that this is a measurable set. So this is a measurable set. Since C is. Any. Real number. C over A is any real number. That's. That's a measurable set. So. AF is a measurable function. Okay, we let A equal to uh be greater than zero. Um. Uh let's see. Let A be less than zero. Then what do we get here? AF of X. Is greater than C. Is the same thing as. F of X. Being less than. C over A. So the equality s the inequality flips. It's the last day of Thanksgiving recess and did you have a haircut? Yes. I got a haircut. Actually, I got it last week. Got it last Sunday. So the only the only thing. The minus the the only thing that A being negative does is it flips the inequality. But we really know that this is also a measurable set. That's the one of the first things we proved. Yes, the last day of Thanksgiving recess, but another one way to think about it is that you're almost done. With the semester. And then you can finally relax. Okay, just copy paste this. And by this was the first thing we proved. It is right here. So we're just leveraging this. These two are equivalent. This is result three point two. Thing is I haven't started revising my term papers. Oh, Joseph. What are we gonna do with you? It is a measurable function. Or is a measurable set. Thus. AF is. A measurable function. You're a measurable set. That's right. And it's not zero. A measurable function. Wait, see you got me writing measurable set, bro. Measurable function. My school goal is back tomorrow unless we get snow day. Fingers crossed. When I was younger. And when I when I went to grade school. I remember watching like cartoons and shows that had like. Um school involved and I remember seeing episodes where there were snow days. And how the snow day was was like it was the reason school was canceled for the day or for the week. I used to be so jealous. Used to be so jealous of snow days. But I'm sure there's like negative things associated to snow days too, like yeah, you get that day off, but maybe like. There are a lot of cons to. To uh. So much snow outside. I gotta pay for having year long good weathers in LA. That's right. We get zero snow days. We get zero snow days here too, actually. There's no cons for snow for snow day. What if you had to go outside? What if you absolutely have to go outside? Like you have to do something. Then you have to shovel the snow and stuff. You have to be worried about um. What is it called? Black ice. Um. A let. A equals to zero. Then AF is identically the zero function. Which is measurable. My comfort is between negative ten and ten degrees. Oh shit. But what does that mean you? I think you're not a person. You're probably like a. You're probably like a penguin or something. I think it's time to move from Norcal and into um the North Pole. I usually wear a hoodie between negative ten and that's it. Yeah, that is mind blowing. I could not wear a hoodie in that in that weather. I would freeze. I freeze just barely like it. If I wear a hoodie in like forty degrees Fahrenheit, which is what? I don't know the conversion. I know the the math conversion, but I can't do it in my head. Oh, it's four degrees. Yeah, that's in the range of you that you're talking about. That's freezing to me. That is cold. I think once it gets within ten degrees Celsius, I need like I need a hoodie and a jacket. Yeah, shoveling. I get to look forward to that later today. Geez, that sucks. Is there like machines that can shovel like you know, like lawn mowers? Is that a thing? Yes. Snow plow. I wouldn't sleep in a freezer. Yeah, I hate the heat too. It's too uh. It's I don't know. At least when you're cold, you can just put more blankets on you and it's it's like more cozy and the heat is just. I don't know how people can like the heat so much. It's crazy. They are frozen delight. Yes, no throwers and I've never seen machines. All people can retain their body heat well. Yeah, another another negative of. Actually, that's a negative for 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 living in cold environments. And that's um. Okay, that's 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 axiom two. Only eight more to go. Okay, I'm probably not gonna do all eight. Holy moly. What else can we do? We did we did the we did the important ones. We did A axiom one and two. Um. The rest of them basically follow from like. Commutivity of functions and associativity of functions. It's basically function. Um. Function properties. So what can I do here? I can what can I do is I can um. The rest. Is left. As an exercise. Left as re left as an exercise to the reader. Someone else can do this. Put a T here at the end. Gotta got the butt teeth, you know? Okay. The tooth. Yeah. Maybe it just needs one tooth, huh? Oh, not the red. Not the red tooth. Okay. Yeah, this is just too much. Trying to prove all of them is just way too much work. How come Puerto Rico is that warm? I don't like the weather, but I'm sure I'm the extreme minority. Most people would love the weather there. It's warm there because he's in the equator. We don't get extremes. In summer, there can be unbearable days. Being sarcastic. If you're being sarcastic, you should put the Kappa emote. You know? Too late pinned. Okay. Let's see. Bro, Ponce is playing unite again. Jesus, he just that guy loves unite. Okay, I'm debating on doing at least the zero property because I mean, it's not that big of a deal. Existence of the zero vector. Oh, that la- the NA finals are starting soon. Yes, yes. I saw a little bit of yesterday. But not everything. I was basically sleepy most of the day yesterday. I got another top nine yesterday, as you know. I vaguely heard that you participated yesterday. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that was the that was kind of the the thing that I heard. I didn't see I didn't see exactly what team you went into, but I heard that you you got a team last minute. Last OJ winners lost to bits and losers. I see, I see. I heard OJ didn't even lose. They went undefeated. Did um did KK compete yesterday? I wasn't even sure if she did. I think not. Oh, they have people that sucks. Yeah, I saw GMA squad did. I saw there was two GMA squads actually. Yeah, we're talking about the AOS Cup. There are like four PR teams too. My old one was there. Is that with uh El Chunti? Have they place? Top sixteen? Yeah, the rest of this is just function stuff. You can basically prove the existence of the zero fact vector by calling on the zero function. And then you can show that the zero function plus any function is just that function again. I think Chinty was in a baby shower at the end, so they had to sub. Oh shit. You had to sub him? Yeah, we do one more. And then that would be it for this study stream. Is the is the uh the support in that team still? I'm actually curious if that guy's still around. Not three point eight. Hmm. Hey, I was actually gonna do the linear combination after this one. Um but I think I'll do that next time. Okay. Hmm. Well, the general case is actually an exercise too. Maybe I should just do it now. I could just do this one tomorrow or not tomorrow. Next week. Okay, the linear combination one's next. I mean the linear stuff is probably the more important part. Just the points eight. Okay, okay, one to N. B A Okay, might as well get this one done since we just finished part of the linearity stuff. Maybe it's automatically implied by the fact that it's in the vector space. Hmm, I think it is actually. Space is Yeah, I think it is a consequence of it being a vector space. Let's see. A VB vector space and S a non-empty subset of V. It's called linear combination. Theoretically, it's a finite number of vectors U one to UN and S It has to be the case, but it's not in any textbook. Yeah, I'm almost positive that this is implied because of the fact that it's a vector space. I did a few good physics problems with Dynasty. We were on chapter nine. Chapter nine. So equations and E M waves. Oh yeah, yes, this stuff. Hmm, something is missing and they show that there is a displacement current. Yeah, that you had to you had to account for. And then they go where Maxwell's equations. Electromagnetic waves, you can derive them. What does this do? You're going to construct a rather simple electromagnetic field that will satisfy Maxwell's equations for empty space. I see. So they start with like basically a sinusoidal function. Maxwell's equations, yeah, the displacing current concept was giving us some trouble. Yeah, it's a little bit weird at first. But it's just basically they handle that weird case where in the capacitor where you have like you have like the um what was it like the surface integral? We have this like weird issue with the surface. The wire arrows show that the current flow through the conductors surface S prime. Which like S has a curve C for its edge. There's no current passing through it. Door knob shape surface with actual with no actual current flowing through it. Yeah. Other waveforms. Are you guys finished this whole chapter? Oh, the different frame problems. I understand Gauss's law because it's charged inside of an enclosed surface, but Ampere's law is weird because you just have a loop and it seems like you can kind of push the surface um surface enclosed by the loop around that well. Yeah, yeah, cuz the 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 um what was it? It was the it's like a consequence of what was it? Stokes theorem or something like this? It's either Stokes or I think it's Stokes if I remember correctly. Time to do a few more weeks on it. Yeah, this is a this chapter is like yeah, it looks like it's just a lot of electromagnetic wave stuff, which is a little bit um like once you get once you get going, it's a little bit straightforward. Just using like the it's a lot of it's usually using the sine functions and the cosine functions to describe the electric field and the magnetic field. And then like writing the pointing vector or or deriving it from one of the E fields or the B fields and yeah, some of this is a lot of it is plug and jog, but there might be some stuff in here that like this, these weird examples sphere with a hole. There might be some nuanced examples. I think make sure I remember correctly. Was it Stokes? Screens. Yeah, it's Stokes. Stokes has like a a surface. Um, basically you have like a loop and you can enclose the loop with a or you can basically you have a loop and you can basically close the loop um with a surface. You can make like a enclosed surface that contains the loop. And basically Stokes theorem is telling you that for any surface that encloses the loop um it should equal to the circulation of the of the um of the loop. As long as the surface is oriented piecewise smooth bounded by a simple closed piecewise smooth uh curve. Yeah, so this is basically that if I remember correctly, this is the basic this is the reason why um you had to introduce the displacement current. We did problems nine point two, nine point three. So Stokes, yeah. That's P D C D F library. How much longer are you guys doing this these um this check this uh book for? Nine point two three charging a half infinite wire. In the B field at a given point in the circle using Beethoven art law. Use the integrated form of Maxwell's equation. Okay. Interesting. Yeah, these problems are are pretty fun. Especially um Purcell's problems are very um are very there are a lot of interesting problems in in Purcell's books. Some of these are pretty fast. Easy calculations. Finish up in a few more weeks. Are you finishing on chapter nine or or are you gonna do chapter ten? What is chapter ten actually? Actual electric field and matter. Oh, it's matter. Well, you guys haven't even covered matter. I completely forgot this book doesn't do it till like later. This stuff is interesting. I don't think Don plans to finish on chap I don't think Don plans to finish chapter nine, I see. I think plans uh I think Don plans to finish online. Yeah, yeah. So that's gonna be the last chapter. So if this is chapter ten, then chapter eleven is magnetic field and matter. Yep. Magnetic field doesn't matter. There you go. They're actually the these two chapters are very similar. So if you read one of them, then you can you can um you can go by the other one kind of fast. Okay, I'm I'm gonna there you can obviously brute force this result using induction, but I'm not gonna do that. Not gonna do that because I'm a little bit lazy. Um, and I actually want to get to integration as soon as possible. So we're not going to prove the rest of the linearity stuff. Unless for some reason I feel like the urge to, which I don't. But um yeah, we got linearity from measurable Lebog measurable functions. We did chapters one through seven, skipped eight, and now we are in nine. What the heck is eight? I should just look at the um table of contents. Oh, alternating current. So it's it's basically um circuits. Good stuff. Do you feel like you feel like your E and M has improved after working through Purcell? Let's see. Okay. Where am I? I am an hour and fifty minutes in. Uh wait, since I was lazy with this one. I mean, this was not I think this is justifiably lazy. They can prove this. Obviously, we can prove this using um induction, but why don't we try the next result? Which is the product one. Actually, I already did that on the bottom. This one will take a little bit of work. Measurable functions, then this is measurable. I read most of it anyway. It's mostly stuff I know if I'm taking a class on electrical networks. I think it's improved a little, but I should probably just read the whole book again, to be honest, another E and M text that so it doesn't seem to stay in my brain for very long. Yeah, it's kind of hard to to um keep those things stuck in your brain unless you're consistently working with it. Like for me was like I spent some time um I spent some time tutoring E and M, so I've I've kind of solidified a lot of like the nuances. But when like during the time when I was when I was doing that, I was I was definitely like struggling like to remember a lot of things, a lot of nuances. Like it's not it's not easy to remember. Like a lot of things specifically with like potentials and conductors. It's a lot of weird weird things that happen with with that case and just trying to remember it and like deriving some of that stuff was a little bit nerve wracking. Okay. What does this say? I think I really proved this too. Do I want to be lazy about this too? Oh my, yeah, I've done it here. Uh So it requires the square to be proved, and I think square is proved earlier. Oh, what the heck? It's proved under composition? Oh, it's much easier to prove it. It's it's much easier to prove composition first. Hmm. You know, if you want to learn, if you want to go through E and M again, you should you should try learning it through um Griffiths, which I'm sure you heard of. Like Purcell's Purcell's definitely a a good book to learn from. Uh, but it doesn't cover it doesn't cover some of the strategies. And some of the strategies you'll find in in Griffiths. Um what the heck? Where is the index? Like um, I know that in in this chapter it's chapter three. Obviously, method of images is is discussed in Purcell. But what is not discussed in Purcell is, I think, separation of variables, if I remember correctly. Let's see. Occurrence, electric fields. Yeah, I don't think this is discussed in in Purcell's book. Yeah, if you have, I mean, if you've gone through Purcell already, you a lot of like it will make going through Griffiths much faster and you just kind of have to focus on some of the things that wasn't discussed in Purcell's book. Like it will make going through Griffiths much faster, and you just kind of have to focus on some of the things that wasn't discussed in Purcell's book. So Purcell. Goes through electric potential, goes through the. The um. Let's see. I'm looking for more potential. It goes to some of the classic problems for potential. So this conductor chapter should have the method of images in here somewhere. Okay, general electrostatic problem of unique and uniqueness theorem. Okay, uniqueness is discovered just like in Griffiths. Images for. The image the image strategy for potential uh conductors. And then it goes into capacitors. And then you have like the the um the capacitor tensor. Energy. Yeah, it looks like it just it doesn't go over that. Which is fine. It's like focusing on different aspects because the E and M is just such a huge it's such a huge um topic. So you can learn separation of variables, like learning the strategy of solving P D Es using uh separation of variables and Cartesian coordinates. And then. That will give you some some practice with the Fourier uh solutions. So you can do the um. The Fourier sign the Fourier series stuff. And then once you have that, you go into spherical coordinates, like a special case of spherical coordinates. And this one is. Um interesting because it loses it uses the Legendre polynomials. Which is pretty cool. So this one this section might be a little like this one might take a little while to kind of digest. You just kind of have to like if you haven't learned um the Legendre polynomials. Then it it's gonna take some time to kind of understand. Chapter two is a beast of a chapter. Yeah. Chapter two and chapter three. They are. They are a lot. Anything that has electric uh fields or potentials and conductors is is a lot. Oh, this is nice. I get I mean, you can you can just do it. So you don't need to do it using composition. But composition is nice because it gives it basically gives it to you for free. So maybe what I'll do is. I like the order of this. Composition is just so it's just so useful. I probably would do composition first and then do these. Second. Oh, wait a minute. I don't even need to do all of these. This is these two are already proved from the vector space result. So it's just really these two. Well, that's funny. A friend of mine just mentioned that Rodriguez formula to me a few weeks ago. I hadn't heard of it before, but. There it is. It's a Legendre polynomial stuff. Yeah, yeah. Using the Rodriguez formula to like. Um help you construct the the polynomial. Okay. Let's see, half much is. F is measurable function, G is measurable and continuous. Oh, is that the requirement for composition? F is measurable and G is Borel. Oh, it's different. It's different. Interesting. Okay, next time. Okay, I think next time what what we'll do is we'll start here. We'll composition. We'll prove this real quick. We'll prove um. These two will be their own result, and then the last thing we'll prove will be the. The product. Oh, and then there's the quotient. What the heck? Does this even have quotient? Maybe it's an exercise. This is telling us that this is not a bijection. Um. Oh, discusses Borel measurable here. It's like an exercise. Do they not use this? Interesting. So the quotient one is not there. We can show that if we wanted to. Okay, some stuff to do next time. I don't know when I'm gonna be back next time. Uh hopefully. Hopefully Friday, but every time I say Friday, I don't come back Friday. So huh. Maybe um this time I'll say I'll come back. What? You are done? Yeah, I'm done. I spent two hours on this, and a lot of it was uh. Me debating if I should do a certain proof a certain way, which is not good. I ended up being very lazy today. Am I gonna do after? I'm gonna play um I'm gonna play in the UCS um. Tournament. No, I got some work to do. I got some other work that's not related to this I had to work on. And no, no, I'm just kidding. I'm not playing in that stuff. Let's see. Thanks for E and M chatting. I really do enjoy that stuff. Yeah, it's really cool. I do like that stuff a lot. That's I spent a lot of time on that because I enjoyed it. It's really uh fun to talk about. What time is it? Nine thirty? Um. I mean, we can do. Here's how about this? I'll play I'll play a game of Unite. And we'll play till we lose, which shouldn't take too long. And then we'll call it. At some point, um I do I do plan on streaming physics content at some point. Um. So maybe when. When I get there, that would be interesting stuff to watch. Um. Let's see. You hate physics? What did physics ever do to you? Chemistry is my major. Oh, you're one of those. Yeah, chemistry is fun too. I still don't understand angular momentum. Maybe when I stream it, I'll make you understand it. There's a lot of interesting problems in angular momentum. One of these days I'll I'll stream. Stream it and show you guys. After years of years after graduates, I just know how to do the questions. Yeah, there's a lot of cool stuff with angular momentum, especially with um non inertial frames. The fact that you know how to do the questions is pretty good already. Should be proud. Yeah, it is confusing. It's not meant to be easy. Um. Especially when you when you have a. When you when when it has to be um. Calculated tensor wise. Then it's like a it's gonna it's a pain in the ass. Angular momentum. Angular momentum is important. Um it has analogies in quantum mechanics, which is. Well, not just analogies. There as um things in quantum mechanics that require angular momentum. And quantum mechanics is the the structure that explains chemistry. Why am I doing this? Honestly. I often I often wonder why um it's common for chemistry. Classes to teach a little bit of quantum theory, like very little. But I always want I always wonder why why they do because it's. I feel like it's very confusing for students often like just like the one S two S. Yeah, that that stuff is fine. I think, but trying to like go over um. Trying to go over like. Um. Let me show you. Actually, I'll I'll show you what I'm talking about. So I I F Y I tutor chemistry too, and when people ask me about this. I just tell them, I'm sorry, but you're just gonna have to memorize this. And I'm gonna show you what I'm talking about. This is electrochemistry. I think uh quantum stuff is chapter nine. No, this is chemical bonding, so I think it's chapter eight. Okay, look at this is okay. Okay, this is uh this is organic. This is periodic properties. This is not it. What chapter is it? Why is it so hard to find the table of uh context contents? Okay, this is gases. This is thermal chemistry. Okay, there's the quantum mechanical models two ninety four. Okay. This stuff. Like, why do we need to discuss? I ca- okay, I understand why in this book they go over this, but like. You can low key get away with um explaining or at least going over um some of the. Some of the the models. Without going over this stuff like. I'm bringing my. Like this interference and diffraction stuff like. If you show a chemistry student this, like someone is learning for the first time, there's no way they're gonna know what the heck is going on. This takes this takes like a whole. Week or two like this topic right here. It takes. It takes like about six weeks for a physics student to to learn. And you wanna teach it to a chemistry student in a day. Like this this theory right here of interference. And like yeah, they're doing a a good job of using illustrations, but like. To go over like the the details to really understand it is is it takes a while. And then you introduce these these things. This is fine, I guess, the equations for energy of light. Um but like. I don't know. I just feel like this is kind of unnecessary. And and when students like are confused about this, I'm just like, okay, just just memorize it. Like right now, it's just kind of like to vaguely expose you to. Some of the details of quantum mechanics. Bro, I ain't reading all that. I don't wanna read it. Uh tried so many times to fully understand it. Like I could teach someone else, so yes. Yeah, those topics were covered for months in my high school physics classes, but deep down I deep down I enjoy it. Yes, exactly. Like double split double slit experiment. We did labs on it and everything. Yeah. The experiments are pretty cool. Um. But really, all you need for this, for the S P stuff. All you really need is is um. You just need to tell them, okay, in. In quantum mechanics, the. The um electron doesn't really have a precise location. Instead, it has like some sort of probability. Um. Probability distribution of where it might be. And. There is energy associated to the electron by this um by this equation. And that is enough to kind of like roughly explain this this concept, but. Like. Why? Why do we? Why do we need to calculate the? Why, why do we, why do we need to calculate the? Or maybe this is just common practice in chemistry. I don't know. I just don't understand why we need to calculate the energies. I guess if you're doing like a lab. And you're, and you're looking at like these visible wavelengths. It went deep into optics, though. We did Snell's law and did polarization, all kinds of stuff. Yeah, yeah. It's common in, in, in physics, if you're learning um, this stuff, to go over that, all those ideas in detail. And if you wanna ramp it up, you would, you would basically. Read this book. Right here. So if you ever wanna learn about those in detail, this is what I mean about like learning it in, in a couple of weeks, like. There are whole chapters that. There are whole chapters that deal with um. Interference, as you can see. A whole chapter on interference, a whole chapter on diffraction, a whole big old chapter on polarization.